September fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, Scarborough zoning board of appeals meeting. Could we have a real call, please?
Ms. Shoup?
Here.
Mr. Blaze?
Here.
Mr. Hebert? Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Stark?
Here.
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
And Mr. Richard.
Okay, very good. Mr. Richard should be on his way. We only need four people to make a quorum. We've got five, so we're in good shape. Stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And we'll start with approval of the minutes of the August tenth, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second down there?
Who seconded it? Thank you.
It's Crockett. Hi, in discussion on the motion? I just asked to have added, for the rare occasion we didn't have an equal, a five oh vote, I just asked to have that identified in the future for the record of who voted in one way or the other. So that's the only change I request. Okay, all in favor? If unanimous, they're in?
I'm abstaining.
You can abstain, okay. Let's start right in with the appeals. Appeal number twenty-five eighty-five. It's a variance appeal by Charles and Eliza Lee, forty-seven Winslow Homer Road, Assistant MAP U nineteen parcel forty-two. As you may remember, we tabled this from the last meeting. And I'm really glad we did that from the information I read. I thought it was really helpful. So, thank you for doing that extra work. As far as the board is concerned, I would like to request that we allow all of the comments and the process from the previous meeting to be allowed into this meeting, and then wrap it up from there if it's comfortable for us to be able to review the last meeting.
That's fine.
Did you have a chance to see that or read it?
Yeah.
Could you name a name, please, and address, and what you'd like to give us an overview of where we left off last?
Sure. My name's Trevor Watson. I'm speaking on behalf of Charles and Eliza Lee for forty-seven Winslow Homer Road. And we're asking for a variance to reduce, basically reduce the front yard setback from forty feet to twenty-eight feet. So, in the, it seemed as though in the last meeting, all of the arguments were accepted, save for the argument about, one of the principal reasons why we're doing this is to try and maintain the, sort of, the mature vegetation that exists on the lot. And I'd like to note that, just sort of as an overview, this is a legal, non-conforming lot of record. So, it's thirteen thousand, about thirteen thousand square feet, which, you know, is thirty-five, forty percent smaller than what is the minimum lot size for a lot within this zone. And the reduction that we're asking for, basically, still maintains it as a smaller-than-legal lot. It reduces it to about thirty percent. Thirty percent smaller than what would be a legal lot. The lot predates modern zoning, the development of the lot, so the house on the lot, the creation of the yard. That also predates zoning, which is pretty obvious when you look at, I mean, you have it in the packet. When you look at the satellite imagery, with the meets and bounds overlay, it's pretty clear this lot was developed and created with really no allowance for modern zoning, which makes sense because it was created so long ago. Our goal is to deal with this non-conformity and strike a balance between maintaining these mature trees, maintaining certain important, you know, almost critical elements, a yard and privacy, which existed during the purchase of the lot, while also focusing the burden on the, removing it from the side yard setbacks and focusing it on one setback, which is the front yard setback, which we feel, and is supported by the licensed arborist, the front yard setback can sort of handle this, can handle this burden. It's got the dimensional ability because of the discrepancy between the travel way and the road width requirements, the topographical ability to absorb this because of the discrepancy between the elevation of the road and then the elevation of the proposed development, and then the vegetative ability because the vegetation that exists per the arborist along the frontage is sort of a witch hazel, sort of new growth material, which existed prior to the Lee's acquisition of the property. And this new growth material can much better withstand, sort of, you know, trimming, cutting, what have you, versus the, you know, I mean, decades-old red oak and mature trees that exist on other sides of the property. And then, we really want to try and eliminate the burden of the neighbor, which currently the property exists, the structure exists on their property. And then, we, again, we want to maintain sort of the things that are reasonable to expect of a property in the R-two zone, such as this, which are characteristic of the neighborhood, which are yards, privacy, you know, things of that nature. Is that a good overview?
That's great. Ms. Watson, I've got to tell you, I, after the meeting, had some concerns about the red oak issue, and I think you probably caught that because red oaks typically, they go down deep as opposed to out. So I said, I'm kind of wondering about that. I did my homework on it before I saw your package. And your credibility is beyond reproach as far as I'm concerned. You were right on with everything you said. And I'm glad you provided the information. I'm glad I had time to review it. I'm glad we tabled this because my assumptions were very wrong as far as the reason for your argument for the trees. And you were dead on. You were dead right. And so I personally, when I looked at the position of this information he's provided, along with the research I had done, he's dead right about those trees. They need that room to survive. And I think that's a pretty strong argument. That was the only issue I think the board had at the time. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe that the other issue was that we needed to see it a little more, a little better layout as exactly what they were looking at because it was very, a little bit unclear as to the positioning. And I'm still a little bit unclear from looking at what you've got up here. Why is it that we couldn't move that back another three or four feet?
I mean, you know, if you want to go from twelve feet to ten feet, I mean, that's, I mean, I prefer the twelve feet for the flexibility allowed with that, but I would respect the board's decision to go down to ten feet. I think it's sort of, it really is an unknown. I mean, as the chair was saying there, you know, most trees go down deep.
Right.
The issue is, I mean, I don't have the report, but the issue is, we've done some, in preparation for building, we've done some test holes, and the ledge exists in this lot. So, it's not unreasonable to assume that these trees are existing without the sort of deep roots and they're existing out. And so if they're not getting down and deep, they're going out further. So, the guidelines, if we look at the report from the arborist on the second or third page, it's talking about a caliper, a trunk diameter of greater than twenty-eight inches requires a minimum distance of thirty feet for the canopy. Conventional wisdom says roots follow the canopy. And so, it's just, it's a level of safety. You know, this mature of a tree affording privacy to not just one abutter, but two abutters, it's sort of a dangerous game how close we want to get to it, really. And that's why we're trying to err on safety's sake, but...
You actually used the lower of the numbers, too, which I thought was interesting. There's two sets of circles. I'm not an expert, I'm not an arbitrator. But I do a lot of homework on it. And because it was inconsistent to me that, as you know, the oaks drive straight down. Typically, you'll see a pine will spread out. Well, it didn't make sense that an oak bedal would be that way. Well, there's no way really that could go out the way it would normally do itself. But they typically use the drip line of the tree as the, what's the word? There's a word for it. Minimum something.
Oh, God.
Whatever it is. But in any event, that's the minimum boundary. And that, when you do the math, it's four and a half feet up.
I think it's a critical root zone, right?
Critical root zone, versus the optimal root zone.
Right.
Which is another, probably ten feet around that. So, what I really respected is, number one, his information was accurate to begin with. He showed it in the more conservative point of view. And for me personally, the issue was, eh, you know, I've heard tree stories before. I believed, I believed what you said. And I don't, not to say I didn't before.
No, no.
But this has kind of confirmed that for me.
I, you know, this is, variances are sticky by nature. And so, you know, I'd love to get the approval at the first meeting, but the reality is, we all need to be on board with it. So whatever we can do to, you know, make everyone comfortable. I'd rather have everyone comfortable than have some questions still in the air that could be asked at a later date. So, I appreciate that.
I'll open the, I'm going to open up the public hearing again for this. Does anybody like to speak on this from the public? I'm going to close the public hearing part of this. We have not received any new letters or anything, correct? Don't go.
No.
Maybe one as well. Board questions? We have gone through the requirements.
I just have one question. How many different styles of houses were looked at? I mean, we're talking about a house that you want to put on here. You want to move it forward. But did you ever consider changing the design of the house so it could fit in there?
We have, and really, the, one of the main, there's one issue that's not applicable to the board, which is that there is a sort of a private requirement of homes in the community to look a certain, of a certain vernacular. The second is that, in my opinion, the property was purchased. And the property was purchased with certain things. Privacy afforded from the mature trees and a yard. And the natural, this is going to be long-winded, so I'm sorry, I apologize. But the natural topography of the lot, the house is situated in the only location that I feel it can exist in to be a lot that is consistent with other, to be a house that's consistent with other properties in the neighborhood and still afford or maintain aspects that existed at the time of purchase. And it doesn't make much sense to me to design a house that is standoffish with the yard. And so, this L-shaped design, well, borderline L-shaped design, which we've come up with, is the best, you know, a good solution for us to sort of engage that yard because that's really what's existed, and that's what's important to the client. And the L-esque shape was an attempt, you know, albeit my attempt, to focus the development on, in that, you know, in that lower corner of the property, getting as close as we can to the setbacks and encroaching on the front yard setback while still maintaining the existing yard and the trees.
Board members, comments, questions? Or emotion?
I guess I would like to add one thing. Normally, I would not be in favor of a project like this, only just because of trees. However, it's a kind of a unique area that these guys are building around there. And it's a, I'm assuming that when you're talking about an agreement, it's probably a covenant that's on that property. And I think probably even prior to that, had they thought it through, they probably would have put covenants as far as privacy in that area. It's not like the rest of Scarborough. And so, not for their privacy, I'm not as concerned for the owners of the property's privacy as I am for the neighbor's privacy. So, I guess that being said, I would probably go along with an allowance for the trees in there in this instance. Not in an overall instance, but in this particular case, yes.
And, you know, I would agree with that. If it weren't for these, I mean, I completely understand. And if it weren't for these trees being, I mean, these trees are, the oak, the red oak in particular is massive. And with the soil conditions and the ledge that exists, I mean, I have no qualm saying that personally, I think it's impossible, it would be impossible to reproduce that tree, you know, with any certainty. And if it puts your mind at ease, I mean, conditions two and six, I think, are coming to play here, you know, of the variance, of the variance application here, which are that the undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. You know, if these trees are eliminated, then that's going to produce a very negative consequence to the immediate abutters to this property. And then six, the unreasonably adverse effect to the natural environment. I mean, that, you know, I mean, I'm sure everyone just read the article. About ten percent of the tree genome just got wiped out, you know? So, I mean, this is, this is very real, so.
Just a reminder, from a board point of view, we are not obligated to meet any of the standards of the neighborhood's covenants. That's not our problem. So, we don't have to be limited to that. But that being said, your point wasn't to that. I just wanted to make sure people understood that neighborhoods' covenants are different in some ways. Questions, comments, or emotion? Does anybody have any questions, any desire, any need to go back through the items? Or are you comfortable with what we did last week?
Sure, Maroon. I believe we still probably need to go through the criteria.
Fine with me. So, let me jump right on that. Mr. Fatt, do a curve at me. You do a curve at me. I just got to wind it.
Section V, page one-six.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, here we are. I'm just going to read them. You don't have to go into full detail, but...
Sure.
And then we'll talk about each one of these as we go along, okay? For the findings of fact. The need of variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. Could you just like to read a short statement on that?
Absolutely. It's a legal, non-conforming lot that does not meet minimum lot size. Additionally, it's burdened by some topographical issue, natural topographical issues, as well as some mature trees that are pushing us in a certain direction.
Ms. Shoup, if you wouldn't mind starting at your end with your opinion and if you're comfortable with that answer or not, and we'll walk right down through. No worries. I can start at the other end if it's easier.
Yeah, sorry.
Could I start? Would you guys done that if you don't mind? Just with the answer to that question, we're just going down with the findings of fact.
A, you're still on?
Number one, the need for variance. Need of variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood.
You're on a different one, Lee?
No, I agree. That is, the location of that property, since it's on a rock ledge, I agree that it does have some unique circumstances there.
Where the confusion comes from is that the actual variance is a practical difficulty variance, but on the agenda, it just says variance.
Oh, okay.
That's all we got.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Mr. Crockett?
Yeah, I would agree on that with the new information that we have on the trees and the detailed charts and dimensions for everything is kind of a finding of fact as to that it would affect the natural environment.
I'm fine with it.
Ms. Shoup?
I agree with that. I think it's important to maintain the privacy there, for the neighbors.
I think it is definitely the circumstance of the property, being the ledge, the circumstances of the, the amount of change actually is going to be minimal and aesthetic. And I think it is absolutely the property itself and where it sits. Number two, the grain of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or the fair market value of the budding properties.
The, the variance will allow the property to exist as it was at the time of purchase with the yard, with the privacy, which is reasonable to expect in this zone. It also, you know, benefits the character of the neighborhood by removing existing burdens.
Let me start right down here. Are you guys in?
Yeah, I would have to agree. I think if anything, it will help maintain that privacy that the neighbors in that area come to expect. And the, and the style of house as well. There was a question to you as to did you look at other styles? And in that area, again, they have their kind of their own unique style of home. So, I agree. I think it's going to, it will help maintain that value, if not increase it.
I would agree. Probably removing the trees would detract from the environment and the characteristics of the neighborhood. So, keeping those in play is probably going to enhance it.
I'm fine with this.
I think just these are nice and they help maintain the value of the nice trees there.
Now, I want to qualify just on the tree issue. We're not saying that the trees would come down if we in fact moved the property back, but we are saying that there's enough of a risk of that happening that it's not, that risk is, to me, because of the exact circumstances of this piece, because of the exact circumstances of those kinds of trees, this, again, if it was different, different ground would be different, different trees would be different. But this is a very unique situation. I don't think the risk is worth the reward of trying to make it fit. I think the chances are, that's the logic that I'm using on this example and why I think it needs it.
Yeah, this is a very unique instance, which has been supported with the graphical representation, with the dimensions, as well as the licensed arborist, who...
And what you said up front in the previous meeting was accurate, and you confirmed that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The practical difficulty is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or the prior owner?
No, that, no, it's not.
No, I agree with that. Yeah, I don't think it was an action by the applicant or prior owner.
I agree.
I agree, so.
Unless they planted a tree, I would agree. No other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance.
Again, I think that they are trying to, I think the one thing that I like about this plan is that you are trying to make it more conforming by getting off of the neighbor's property and moving it as close into that box as you possibly can. So, I think that that's really your only option on that.
Do we have the total dimensions on the homes? I don't see on the charts of the plans here, like what's the total square footage or what's the total?
I didn't, I apologize. I did not include that information. The last meeting, the existing home is about twenty-seven hundred square feet, twenty-eight hundred square feet. And the proposed home is twenty-eight to twenty-nine hundred square feet, depending on the configuration of the decks. So, they are comparable in size. We're not proposing to ask for a variance to then build a four thousand, five thousand square foot home.
But it is larger.
I'm sorry, say the one...
It is larger from what you're saying?
It is, yes, it is larger, but I would, I would maintain that it is minimally larger. Fewer than five percent.
This is the toughest one for me to struggle with because a feasible alternative would be to bring the house down a little bit and getting it closer to the line. So, I wouldn't agree that there's no feasible alternative.
I agree with him.
That there isn't a feasible alternative, or that you're okay with the fact that he's showing it as he is showing it?
I'm okay with the fact that there really isn't any feasible alternative after what he discussed about the neighborhood.
It's hard to, you know, you have to, the way that this is structured, as you guys are very familiar with, is that it's hard to have a black and white answer to this. So, we're stringing together, you know, the ability for us to string together multiple arguments to answer one question is critical for this. And, you know, I mean, feasible is reasonable, you know? And it's reasonable to expect a privacy which existed at time of purchase, a yard which existed at time of purchase, which both of those things coupled together, due to the natural topography, due to the non-conformity of the lot, due to the existing mature trees. You know, these are, these are arguments that we use to maintain that this is the most realistic, this is the most practical, this is the most reasonable, from our opinion, alternative.
Ms. Shoup, I don't think you have a chance to answer on that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we've discussed this at length, and I appreciate the evidence that you have submitted and support. And I agree. I mean, I don't think there really is a feasible alternative.
I think that you bring up a very good point, Mr. Crockett, as far as the change in size. The reason I didn't have a problem with that is by looking at the top, excuse me, topography, what you did is try to line it up with what was actually on that topography. And less than five percent, to me, was, it wasn't, this wasn't an intent to expand the use. And the other thing is we're getting it off from somebody else's property, which I think is a big deal. So, yeah, you're gaining maybe a five percent edge there. But I don't, to me, that's not the motive here. And the way those, the rocks were designed, it fits the layout... And the way those, the rocks were designed, the way, it fits, the layout you have, to me, makes sense, even though it is what I would normally agree on, 100% in your position with that. But the two issues to me are the fact that it's off the other person's property, and in fact, it does align with the topography of the property. Okay, the next one is, the grain of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly in conformance with the surrounding properties.
Yeah, I mean, we're eliminating the burden on the neighbor's property, we're focusing the encroachment onto one setback, and, I mean, we're making it more nearly, as best we can, more nearly into conformance.
Yeah, I would have to agree with that. Not only are you moving it over, you're rebuilding it the way that most of those houses have been rebuilt, and that is with the same type of character that they've had in the past, because all those places down there started off many, many years ago. So I think you've done a good job there.
Yeah, and I do appreciate the finding of fact that it's coming off the neighbor's property, so we're obviously taking something that's intruding in someone else's property right now and putting it on the property it should be and within the envelope.
Yeah, I think you've done a good job in pulling it off, putting it as much into the building envelope as possible. And actually, if you take a look at it, and, you know, somebody could come forward, they had a house just like this and wanted a limited reduction in yard size to put on a porch, we would probably grant that pretty easily, so I don't see any problem with this at all.
Under the, you're talking about under the new regulations? You guys helped put that through, didn't you? Are you talking about under the new regulations that just came into effect? Let's see, whatever the zone this is in now, the...
No, he's just talking about the limited reduction.
Oh, just limited reduction, okay, sorry. Ms. Shoup?
I agree with everything the board has said.
Same place, I'm not wrong with that. The grain of the variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment.
Again, I think we're preserving the natural environment, so certainly no change there.
I would agree. Measures have been made to preserve the environment, and proof and documentation we've got from the reports in front of us show us that, so.
I'll tell you, that one picture of that tree is very, very, very impressive, and just by saving that tree, I think we're doing a wonderful job.
I didn't know you were a tree hanger.
Hey!
I'll take it.
No, I mean, I agree with you aboard. I think it's great that you really considered the trees and the natural things that were in that.
I think if it's perfectly normally, to be candid, like I said, I think that you did your homework. It would be a great excuse in some cases, as an excuse. I don't think that's the case in this case. I think you're generally looking after your best interest of the community, the neighborhood, the landscape, the environment, expense the runoff. There's so many reasons why I think what you're doing is right, is, I'm very comfortable with it. And you're not in a flood zone?
No.
So that's that. So putting that in as findings of fact, do I have any other questions?
No more questions, but I would like to add one thing here, that if, I think if I'm to approve this, because we don't have actual house plans with square footage and everything, I would, I would want to put in there that it's, it would be approved with no more than 150 square, additional square feet above what currently is there, or 180 or whatever. We need to pick a number, because...
Do we just go with the plan as...
We don't have, we don't have dimensions on that plan.
Yeah, that's what concerns me, is we don't have any numbers of the building.
We have a picture of it, but we don't, we don't have the numbers. And that's something that we usually, pretty much always require.
That's, I don't, I'm not, I'm not concerned about that.
Yeah, but we are.
No, that, I mean, I'm just telling you that I'm not concerned about it.
My biggest concern is making sure that the planning to the code department... My biggest concern would be that the code enforcement officer is okay with how they deal with that. Do you have any problem with anything on that? Want some, any title?
Well, it's difficult to say, you know, without numbers. That's the problem, so I don't know if Trevor has...
What if, in lieu of numbers, we use the dimensional requirements that were asked for at the last meeting? I mean, I'm not, I can't, you know, at a certain point, I'm going to meet the coverage requirements, you know, the coverage maximums.
You have a site plan that's to scale, even though it's not dimensioned?
We have a site plan, this site plan was developed by Owen Haskell, which is a licensed...
The footprint that you've placed, is the proposed, the proposed footprint?
Yes, that's correct.
Is to scale, correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's drawn on, it's drawn on computer.
So if and when the building plans are submitted, and a site plan is submitted, and it basically matches that, you know, without, without going more than a foot or two outside the perimeter of what you're showing there, and obviously has to meet the same requested...
Dimensional requirements.
Yes. So, I mean, if that's, if that's acceptable, if there's any question when we receive the plans, that it's not the same type of footprint that's being proposed, it's something drastically different, I can, I can always remand it back to the board for further review at that point. Does that sound fair?
I'd be good with that.
Yeah, I think that's very reasonable. And as long as he's comfortable, that's all I care about.
I said it before, I have no issue with this.
Fantastic.
I'm never comfortable.
As long as he's tolerant.
He sounds like me.
So, okay, so you okay with that?
Yes.
It's just being handled as, that, when the motion comes forward, that it would be, it would meet the expectations of the code enforcement officer. Is that clear enough? Want to tighten, if you could tighten it?
If I could, I'd propose that you use language something like, matching the proposed footprint as shown on the submitted site plan.
Perfect. I'll make the motion based...
That's a lot more easy, a lot more easy, a lot easier to put your hands around.
So I'll actually move that we approve the plan as, as you proposed. I think that's a perfectly way to put it.
I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't the, wouldn't the proposed building have to match the site plan that you guys approved anyways?
We've seen a bunch of different things.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we'd like to tell you that it all falls the way it's supposed to, but not always. And so I think the way that, as long as he has to find it, I think meets, if he's kept, if he can make it work, I don't have a problem with that. So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Seeing none in favor? And opposed? We have one opposed. Now, if that does carry?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
(cough) Thank you.
Thank you.
You look surprised. What? Break it to me a little bit.
Okay. You have to tell me that, so.
Okay, the next appeal is appeal number 2586, special exception appeal request.